I call to order the April 1st, 2020 business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Please, let's recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay.
Hold on.
Treasure Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. Okay, so, good afternoon, everyone. Um, I want to take a minute to talk about the unique forum in which we are meeting today. Um, the board of, this Board of Education prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we have decided to convene on this video conference call. Even under these unique circumstances, we have tried to make this meeting as public as we can. With the meeting notice that went out last week, we provided direction for members of the public to view this meeting via a live stream on the internet. We are also recording the meeting and will post the video on our district's website. Documents that are being discussed during the meeting, including the treasurer's report and superintendent's recommendations and the resolutions, are available for the public to review online on the district's website. For this first meeting of the, on our video conference, we are trying to keep things as simple as possible. We have minimized the agenda to the most important topic. And as important as it is for us to hear from the public, we are not going to have our usual hearing of the public agenda item during today's, um, meeting. If the quarantine order continues and we find ourselves having additional meetings by video conference, we will explore ways to allow the public to participate in these meetings. For now, however, we encourage members of the public to contact us or send us emails and we will try to direct you to the appropriate person at CPS to respond to your concerns. As well, for video conference only, please note that the video will be on a 30-second delay. We are very hopeful that the need to quarantine will soon be alleviated and that we will be meeting in person again soon. But under the circumstances, we are trying to ensure that the operations of the district continue and that the public can still see and hear all of the board's deliberations and decisions. Thank you so much. So, moving on, does anyone have any kudos?
I have kudos.
Okay. Ms. Bowers? Ms. Bowers?
I'm sorry, I forgot to raise my hand. Sorry, Mike. Uh, I want to give kudos to Superintendent Mitchell and the leadership team on the magnificent work you guys have done with helping our families transition. I have gotten a lot of feedback from neighborhood families, other families, about how well the teachers are transitioning, they're reaching out to students, they're checking in on them. Um, so I just want to give you kudos, uh, for all the work that you are doing, all the reports that you've been giving to keep me updated, they've been very helpful. So, a job well done.
Thank you. Mr. Morosky? Mr. Morosky? Okay.
He's muted.
He's muted. Okay. Um, any other, any other kudos? Mr. Morosky, you have to unmute. Okay, I'm not sure, okay, we're not, we're not getting anything from Mr. Morosky as yet. Any other kudos before we move on? All right. Mr. Morosky, can you hear us? Okay, but we'll move on. We're, we're not hearing you. Mr. Lindy?
Uh, thanks Carolyn, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I have two, and at the risk of being somewhat repetitive, I would just want to echo what Pam shared. This is unlike any situation, uh, I think I've certainly seen in my lifetime. Um, my dad is in his eighties and I was talking to him last week about whether he's seen anything like this in his lifetime, and he said no. Um, and so I just thought it was worth dwelling a little bit longer on, um, what an extraordinary, extraordinary set of circumstances we find ourselves in. Um, and I wanted to echo what Pam said about our superintendent and the administration. Uh, and then I wanted to add, just to Krista and the technology team who's put in place a meeting like this, um, what, what the public might not see are the hours and hours and hours and hours that went into getting the setup, um, the testing and the dry runs that the board and the administration did yesterday and in the preceding days. Um, and that's not easy, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Morosky, can you hear us now? Go for it. Okay. We're, we're still having some technical issues hearing Mr. Morosky, at least I am, we can't hear you. So, we'll, we'll, we'll come back. Uh, Mr. Messer?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, um, just building on the, the last, um, you know, I think, uh, one thing that just has gone extremely well, according to families that I've talked to throughout the district and, and frankly, just people in the community who have observed, and that is, uh, the people in our food service, um, function that have made sure that our children are fed during these times. And, um, that can't be easy, that's a lot of children, and I know there is not a ginormous staff. Um, but it's a lot of work for people, not only to prepare them, but then to distribute them. And, um, I just think that is worthy of all of our kudos, and I know the community at large appreciates that, as well as the community partners that have also stepped in to fill the gaps for evenings and weekends as our families are struggling with, um, um, people being furloughed or, or being out of work, et cetera. And those community partners have really stepped in and, uh, really done some great things for the things that we are not able to provide. So together, um, it's just a really great representation of love for our children at Cincinnati Public Schools.
All right, Mr. Morosky, would you like to try again? And this, Ms. Bolton will get to you next. Mr. Morosky? Hi. No. I'm sorry. We'll come back. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, I want to make sure that we are complimentary of the business folks that have also stepped in not only with contributions, but direct access to copies made for our families. Particularly, I want to thank, uh, Staples. That has been a tremendous opportunity for some of our folks, some of our families. And I also, uh, it may grieve me as a partisan Democratic person, but I have got to compliment to not only the governor, but more particularly Ohio Department of Ed and all those folks up in Columbus that we usually get mad at on recognizing the reality that our children and our families and our instructors are in. Because without them doing that, if, this would be, this would be so stressful for them, for us and, and our families and our kids for not having an opportunity to, to count this year in a way that we can keep moving forward. So, uh, I, I'm actually going to say something nice about Columbus, so there you go.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Okay, Mr. Morosky, we'd like to try you again. Can you, are you, go for it? I, I am not hearing anything. I'm, I'm so sorry. Okay. But, oh, okay, so before we move on, let me just try to, uh, I ditto everything that's been said, uh, but I do want to give sort of a special acknowledgement, um, to all, not, not only the staff that have, you know, violent, uh, been working to support our kids, but I think a special thanks to all of the teachers especially, because there's been a lot of love spread for our, for our students. Um, the hard work, making sure that they, um, stay in contact with the students. Uh, I've seen some lovely videos on Facebook, um, where they're really reaching out to our students and families. And, and so, um, just sort of a special kudos. And, and again, thanks to Laura and the leadership team as well. Okay, Mr. Morosky, one more time. It's not working. Oh, okay.
You can't hear me?
There, there, there is.
There you go. Okay.
Touchdown.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Go for it.
All right, um, so, uh, oh my, I had a lot of kudos, they've all been largely taken. So there's just one thing I want to highlight, um, that I, I know I've been called upon to do in my work, and I'm certain a lot of people have, and I know that the superintendent and her team have, which is pivot their job duties quickly. Um, and not just in response to the pandemic, but every day, um, as, uh, things change. And so I want to give a huge shout out to the superintendent and her team. I think of someone specifically like Josh Harden, who's the district athletic director, who is not a volunteer coordinator of tens of thousands of people by trade and has volunteered to do that. Um, as such, I would also like to give a shout out to all the people that he's been coordinating who have also had to pivot their roles in the community, and they've elected to pivot their roles, um, to work with us. Uh, so that would be my shout out. I know it's not easy. And to add on to that complexity, um, that pivoting is happening every hour, uh, it seems. So, that, kudos to everybody.
Great. Thank you, and, and we're glad that we were able to get your kudos. Okay, not that anybody was paying attention to you, because we see that little guy right there, so we're all looking at him. Thank you though. Okay, moving on, this, this, yeah. All right, future product of, uh, CPS. Okay, Ms. Bates, do we have any retirements?
No retirements.
No retirements, okay. Alrighty, so we're at the item on the agenda for, uh, our, uh, presentation. Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce tonight, the, this evening's presentation.
All right, gladly, thank you. And, um, thank you to all of our administrators, our teachers, our entire employee staff, as well as the entire community. Um, in addition to Staples supporting us, GE also paid for FedEx to pay for, um, to copy some lessons for us. And so, just a huge outpour from the community, and so thank you so much. Sarah Tremble Oliver is actually going to drive the PowerPoint this evening. Our, our assistant or deputy superintendent, Tiana Amat, and I will be leading this presentation. And Sarah, I'll just ask for the next slide if that's okay, to keep it moving. All right, so this is an update to our, um, COVID-19 plan. Next slide, Sarah? Oh, so Sarah, the next slide should be the, um, the safety of our community. I'm sorry, we're having a little bit of technical difficulty. Just one moment.
That was the latest one, um, that I have, Laura, do you want me to go back to the prior version?
Please.
Okay, just give me one second.
Okay. So my apologies, do you have the latest one from, from Joan?
Yes.
Or from myself? Okay.
Yes, I do.
Okay. So I'll just say, while we're waiting for that to come up, um, there will be a short part of this presentation that's focused on the operations, but the lion's share of the presentation is really focused on student learning, which is our core service. Yeah, so Sarah, that slide is much, there you go, Sarah, that's it, that's, that's the presentation. Excellent, yay, thank you, okay. Um, so we're really passionate about the safety of our community. And so I'm just going to stay here for just a moment, only because as Board Member Lindy has said, this is something that we have never seen in, in our lifetime. And so there are some complexities and challenges that are part of this COVID, um, crisis, um, that's really significantly different. Earlier, I was having a conversation regarding the snow days that we had in the seventies, and this is really very different than that, because, um, once you got into your homes, you felt like you were pretty safe. With this, uh, virus outbreak, people are still waiting to see if they are still sick. And so we need to really understand and grasp the fact that, um, a lot of our parents, our kids, and our staff members are very scared and they're very concerned about their own personal future and safety. And so the safety of our community is our first priority. Next slide, Sarah. So you may have noticed that this slide's changed. And in my first presentation back, um, earlier in, in March regarding our COVID-19 plan, I had a real focus on the three key messages around having a plan, executing that plan and making adjustments. And now our real focus is on creating a caring community of adults who are leading our students, our kids. And so when I speak of this caring community, I'm talking about the school communities, I'm talking about our community at large, those people who are stepping up and volunteering and helping, but also the community in terms of our families. So it's critically important that our kids know that we are wrapping, um, services, love, and support around them. The second major message for this presentation is centered around hope. And hope can sometimes have a negative connotation, because oftentimes it isn't viewed, it's viewed as a passive word. But in this context, hope gives us collective strength, and it's something that we all need at this moment. We all need to see a future beyond today, beyond COVID-19. And so hope really is a unifying, um, quality that we need to hold on to. I'm reminded of the, uh, words from Maya Angelou. Fear and hope cannot occupy the same space. Invite hope to stay. And so although we're focused on this technical aspect of our work, we also need to be very focused on, there is a future for our students and for Cincinnati Public and for the city. And so hope is key, and it's important. And the third key message is around learning, which is our core business, to make sure that although we are taking care of the operations of the district, at the end of the day, student learning is our major focus and our goal. Next slide, Sarah. So as I said, I'm going to spend just a couple moments on operations to get everyone up to date on the operations of the district, and then our deputy superintendent will spend a lion's share of the time really talking about that last key message, which is centered around student learning. Next slide, Sarah. So during our last meeting, I did present to you our pandemic plan, and this is just a template that we use to guide our work. This, uh, template and plan was rolled out to all of our, um, directors in a face-to-face meeting before we actually left school, um, on December, on March 13th. And, uh, we also had a video conference with all of our principals and groups of, four different groups to really go over the pandemic plan to make sure that they had the tools and resources they need to continue their work through this crisis. Next slide, please. We are using this, um, COVID-19 hierarchy of needs to really guide our work. And you can see that there are, uh, six focus areas, one on getting organized. And so we spend a lot of time making sure that we're organizing our work, our people, um, our processes to be able to serve our young people and their families. And we actually have, each one of these focus areas has a small team that's dedicated to that work. Um, and so the entire performance leadership team has been really focused on getting organized. Focus area number two lives with Susan Bunty and Shauna Murphy and Sarah Tremble Oliver. And this is really making sure that our kids are safe, that our staff members are safe, and that they have the resources they, that they need. And I'm talking about the basic resources. So whether we're talking about our kids who are experiencing homelessness in terms of finding shelter for them, also providing food, as well as the mental health and well-being of our young people. And that is something that we will begin tracking when we do our weekly calls to our, our, um, students, making sure that they have their, all of their health needs being met. The third area is really a focus on policy. And so we can imagine that as a result of this crisis, there are probably some policies that we want to institute in a situation like this moving forward. And I think that, uh, there's a lot of guidance that's been provided to us from the governor, from the state, um, that will help us build out additional policies and recommend policies to the board. I will definitely say that it has shaped our procedures. And so this focus area is really owned, um, by a good number of our team members, but more specifically Paul McDole and, um, Dan Hoine and Susan Bunty. Focus area four is centered around engagement and relationships. And we're so excited to have Krista Boyle on as our new chief of communications and, um, engagement. And so she has developed a, a comprehensive COVID-19 communication plan, which, um, has a real focus on not only informing the public, but also moting the public, motivating the public to have that hope and a sense of, um, community as we're so isolated right now. And so we would love the opportunity for Krista to be able to present that plan, that comprehensive plan for the board as well. Number five, focus area centered around access. And so this is the work of our chief information officer, along with our, um, curriculum group, group, to really make sure that our kids have the necessary tools and, um, uh, resources as needed to provide those digital lessons. And so our deputy superintendent will talk about that at length as well. And then focus area six is really owned by our deputy superintendent, Tiana Amat, and our two assistant superintendents, Susan Bunty and Shauna Murphy, in terms of our learning for our young people, pre-K through 12th grade. And so we are still extremely focused on those three Es and making sure that our kids have a plan and a future, um, after they graduate from CPS this year. And so you can see, this is the framework that we're really using to guide our work. Next slide, please. As we think about supporting our families, customer care, our customer care center is up and operating. Um, we are continuing to move forward. Our magnet and high school lottery process will end on May 8th. Um, we're making sure that we're also being able to provide guardians and parents the opportunity to enroll their kids through our online CPS, um, offering. We are also still, um, making sure that we can provide work permits for our young people who want to be able to work. So our customer care center is actually open, functioning on five days a week. They're keeping their normal business hours. We have about five or six automated responses. So if you call into that number, and the number is 363-0123, then you get, um, definitely you get five recorded, um, messages, and you can identify a button to drill down into something very specific that you want have answered, questions. And we put, um, on those buttons, those drill down buttons, the most asked questions that came into the center. And then if you have a question beyond five or six choices that are offered, then the telephone will ring to one of our customer care service staff, um, in their home, and they'll be able to answer, and, and parents and guardians will actually be able to speak with a live person. Next slide, please. In terms of student dining services, you know that we're providing meals for our young people at 24 of our school sites. Uh, we also know that there's been a waiver that's been provided, um, in terms of how those meals are distributed to our young people, and so we're continuing that work. Um, there's a potential $2.3 million financial impact, uh, due to the higher cost of meals and labor. Next slide, please. So this slide shows you a breakdown by school, by date, the number of meals that are given out on a daily basis, and then communicate, um, a comprehensive or cumulative, that's what I was looking for, um, total at the end of the week. So you can see that, um, there are a number of sites that have a lot of parents and kids coming to get meals for our young people. Next slide. In terms of facilities, since the governor has ordered a stay-at-home mandate, we did decide to close our buildings. Um, and so when we are released to go back into them, we will make sure that they are cleaned and sanitized before anyone, before our staff members are allowed back in. Um, there are some instances, uh, that staff members do need to get inside the buildings to be able to, to get information, teachers want to get work, uh, laptop computers. And so we're designating a day where people can go in and get those items. Um, it is to go in and get those items extremely quickly. It's like 10 minutes in and out, not cleaning your room, not organizing your room, but getting the essentials that you need to function and then leaving outside of the building. So we are, um, coordinating those. And in the spirit of safety, we are also making sure that if you come to pick up materials at your designated time at, at your building, that you, um, take your temperature before arriving, write it down on a piece of paper, and give it to one of the administrators at the building. Anyone who has a fever will not be permitted inside the building, because we want to make sure that while we're gathering work, we're also keeping our staff members safe. Um, although our facilities are closed, we are still monitoring them in terms of security. And so, um, we, um, are doing that work remotely. In addition to twice a week, um, the facilities team, they actually walk every single building to ensure that everything is, um, functioning and operating well, and that there aren't any, um, major, um, problems, whether, uh, there's a leak or, um, electrical problems. So we're walking our buildings twice a week to make sure everything is in place. Next slide, please. You know that many of our health centers are up and, um, actually functioning. The, um, Cincinnati Health Department asked to open some of those sites, as well as, um, Children's Hospital. And so you can see the sites on the, on the screen that are identified, where we have, um, our, um, offices that are open in terms of the health centers. And you can see the number of people have, who have visited them to date. Um, it is my understanding that we will be shortly closing those centers, um, because the healthcare staff will be diverted to take on, um, the surge of sick people that, um, are anticipated, um, by the state within the next couple of weeks. Next slide. Purchasing, we are very carefully looking at all of our orders and the processing of those orders. We, um, are looking at any, um, contract that is 200,000 or over first, and as a priority. And then we'll keep going down to look at, um, all of the individual contracts, to really identify which contracts we still need to move forward with this year, and the contracts that we either need to end or modify, because the work cannot take place in this remote environment. So this is just to let you know that we are being fiscally responsible and looking at all of our contracts and the services that are being provided, and how we are paying or quite honestly, not paying for services that aren't being provided. Next slide, please. This outlines the budget submission process. We had to make some revisions to our budget process concerning the fact that we are, um, no longer in, on our sites and the fact that we had spring break last week. And so you can see there are some modifications that have been made. We are carefully reviewing all of our budgets for this year and looking for cost savings for this year, um, because we know that there are going to be some additional costs related to COVID-19. We're also moving forward with the development of our, um, We're also moving forward with the development of our budget ask and proposals for next year. We did use the mission margin matrix to identify those programs that we wanted to be able to fund for next year. But again, we are looking at this with a very critical eye and looking at return on investment as we have to very carefully spend every dollar because it is so important in general, but it's also important in this climate. Next slide. As we do this work and we think about our budget, we are continuing to host interviews through a system very similar to the one we're using today. And so you can see that there are virtual interviews that are still taking place and some offers that have been made. And you can see that we have projected about 30 retirements to date. Next slide. As we think about our employees and HR, we really wanted to work to make sure that they had some tips for how to operate in this remote environment. And so Susan Bunty, our assistant superintendent over talent development, has done a lot of work to really get those tips out to all of our staff members in terms of this climate of how we can work better in this remote environment. I'll have to give a shout out to board member Messer, who has sent us some great information from Johnson &amp; Johnson in terms of how they've structured their work. And so we've been able to use some of that as we've been working moving forward. And then the next slide really talks about self-care during this, during this time. And this is something that we really have tried and have worked really hard on. So many of our staff members are so dedicated to our kids that a lot of times they put our kids before themselves. And so this is kind of like riding on the airplane. We need you to put your oxygen mask on first before you put on someone else's mask and help them. It is critically important that our staff members take care of themselves. And it's also important that they feel that they are being cared for by the district, especially when we think about the isolation that so many people are experiencing. Not only our kids are experiencing isolation, but we also really do need to consider that our staff members are impacted by this and they are experiencing the isolation as well. And so we wanted to provide some self-care tips for them. And we'll be continuing to do this and also creating some environments, some virtual environments for people to be able to gather together during this isolation period. Next slide. There's a lot of media work that has been happening, whether you're talking about social media or the media at large in terms of newspaper and news. And so we're constantly staying connected to social media. You may know that we launched a campaign this week. This week is Spirit Week. And so the numbers are phenomenal in terms of the number of people who are engaged in Spirit Week. Again, this is about CPS United and CPS Draw. It's about a sense of hope and a sense of community. And again, all of this is through the lens of we want to inform people, but we also want to motivate people. So there, there's a lot that we're doing. We have about six to eight different ways that we're communicating with people, whether it's a robocall, e-newsletter, our website, emails, social media, the news media outlets themselves. And so we are really tapping into a variety of ways to keep everyone engaged with what's happening within our district and also to give us information to inform our work. And the next slide is my next slide, my last slide before I do a handoff to our deputy superintendent. I wanted to bring to everyone's mind House Bill 197, which was passed, which is also really guiding our work as well, especially on the academic level. I wanted to highlight just a couple of areas that are hot on the minds of our parents and also our kids. And that's the elimination of the testing for 2019, 2020. We, and the reason I'm calling these things out is because parents have been very concerned about the testing and how their kids might perform during this time period and what impact, what negative impact this might have on their, their students. And so we are quite honestly, very happy that the testing has been eliminated under these extreme circumstances. There's also been the dismissal of the state report card for this school year considering the testing situation. There's been a waiver given as it relates to the third grade guarantee. And I know our deputy superintendent will talk about that, as well as the opportunity for the district to decide the graduation of our young people based upon the completion of graduation requirements as outlined by the state pertaining to earning credits. And then also wanted to point out, there are a lot of other items in one, in House Bill 197, but wanted to also highlight the fact that we have the permission to use virtual learning as part of our instructional requirements and distance learning for the district. And so at this time, I would like to turn the presentation and the lion's share of the presentation over to our deputy superintendent Tiana Amat to really talk about remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good to see all of the board members virtually. This piece of the presentation is around remote learning. Sarah, if you can move on to the next slide, please. We have addressed this deck based on questions we received from our families and our parents. So first addressing student grades. Third quarter grades are due on Friday. So our teachers are putting grades in and teachers and parents will have access on April 6th. As far as the fourth quarter grades, we are going to give students feedback on the work that they are participating in now. And I would like to take out a few moments just to address access and equity. In our decisions, as we go through this presentation, we have looked through that lens. And just to share some of the stories that I have encountered over the last two weeks regarding access. One is around limited devices. We have families that have multiple students at home, but one device and mom and dad is working. So it's a limited use of devices. We have students who are working, parents have lost their jobs. So they are working at Krogers, the Walmarts. If you go to the local stores, you will see a lot of our students there. And we also know that there's varying support at home because we have families, parents that are working and older siblings taking care of families. So I thought this was important to share this information with you to help you understand how we have packaged learning. And we have taken a hybrid approach. So one with hard copies, our enrichment learning packets, but we also offer online lessons and learning that I will share in this presentation. Next slide, please. So we have learning packets on Schoology and our CPS website. And also we will be distributing learning packets at five mil sites starting Monday. And the learning packets are new. It is lessons for next week, all the way to the remainder of the school year. Next slide, please. It is important that we prioritize our devices. So we are looking at our seniors to make sure that they are on track for graduating. Next slide. We are following House Bill 197, which states students being on track. And so we are following the state requirements, which is a minimum of 20 credit hours. Next slide. There are several programs to ensure that our students have credit hours and one being credit recovery. Our students are participating in programs like Apex Learning. It's a web, web-based program. So we are working with ITM to ensure that all of our kids have devices so they can make sure that they have the credits and are on track to graduate. We are looking at May 1st as our deadline to have the numbers of kids qualified to graduation. Our teachers have been working tirelessly, working with our kids to ensure that they meet those requirements. Next slide. Next slide, please. If you can go back one to the advanced placement. Thank you. We have several students still participating on online advanced placement. And our traditional kids are also participating in the classes virtually. College Board is continuing the test that is coming up and have offered online classes. So our kids are participating right now with college board lessons with their teachers and will be prepared to take the AP online test. We are continuing to work with ITM to ensure that our kids have the technology. And Craig Hoover is our contact for AP. So on this slide, it just has the lessons that are on YouTube, that are on Schoology. And then we're also asking our students to participate in a short survey to determine technology needs. Next slide. College Credit Plus. We want to support our students in the three E's and one being enrolled in that they continue to have the edge and receive college credit as high school students. And we are maintaining those classes as well and providing devices for our students that are enrolled in College Credit Plus. Next slide. Next slide. So House Bill 197 talks about exempting third grade guarantee. Next slide. And all of our students will move on from third grade to fourth grade. But we are being proactive and using the data that we have on our students to determine those gaps. So when they come into fourth grade, we can target interventions and close those gaps to ensure that they are on grade level. So we're going to use the fourth grade air assessment and then our winter map that was just completed in January and February. So we have that data. Teachers have access to that data. So we can start having individualized plans for our fourth, incoming fourth grade students. Next slide. We have shared our teacher expectations, principal expectations with our staff. So it is clear what supports and what will be standard across the district that we will provide to all of our families. First and foremost is building relationships, supporting our families. And we do that through communication. So teachers will respond within 24 hours, whether it's emails, Schoology, just to have that virtual connection. Also, we are working with our IT department for teleconferencing for those families who do not have access to the internet that we are calling homes. And we expect at least once a week to have phone conversation with our families and our students to ensure that they are healthy and how can we support them and provide them feedback, academic support as well. Teachers will be holding office hours, 20 hours a week. It's by appointment. So they will talk and meet with students and families through a variety of platforms. So yes, it could be Schoology, it could be by phone, but we have our teachers also using Remind, Zoom and Classroom Dojo. Next slide. Expectations for principals. We have had a training with our principals. We meet with them twice a week and to support them in this new way, new way of leadership. And some of the topics are around maintain your school vision and mission, how to build relationships remotely, being an instructional leader, managing operations and collaborate and engage. So like us doing this Blue Gene event, principals are leading staff meetings through Blue Jeans. Staff are participating in professional development. That can be found on our curriculum website. And so we are supporting teachers on how to teach remotely, supporting group chats and discussions through this time. Next slide, please. So resources for families. So what I shared with you was to ensure access to learning and through more of a typical model. Now I want to share some of the other resources that we are providing. One is how to maintain a schedule. So we gave out sample schedules that families will be able to tailor based on their context and their, their home, home life. Next schedule, next slide, please. We encourage our families to stay connected, whether it's through Schoology, our social media campaign CPS United. We have seen thousands of shout-outs to our teachers and staff members on social media. And it's just another way to connect and support one another during these times. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So some other tools that are out there. So specifically for early childhood, yes, they have the packets, but we have a YouTube cha, channel. And there are folders in this YouTube channel and we're building this library. So we have field trips. So the first one that's up is Field Trips to the Farm. We have Read Alouds, we have Circle Time. And then we are connecting with other resources for early childhood. And there's some tips that will be shared with parents. Next slide, please. Lots of movement. So as you know, we had implemented this year the Alexa Movement, Mission to Move. So that is available to our families. There are videos and a library for Mission to Move. And then Facebook Live on how can we continue to get our kids moving and active? Next slide, please. We have such a wonderful district of choice. And so our curriculum department met and came up with the best resources that they could find on Montessori and how parents can support Montessori learning. So there are some resources, blogs, webinars listed here for our families. Next slide, please. Here are other resources, Eureka Math, Science and Wit and Wisdom, which is our newly adopted ELA curriculum. So these are all resources beyond the packets. It is greatminds.org. It is greatminds.org that parents can go to and get lessons, online lessons. For high school, it is the same from my perspective and ThinkCirca, Engage New York, Khan Academy, which a lot of families are familiar with. So there's a variety of resources here beyond our packets. Again, thinking about equity and access. I just closed the deal. I'm really excited to report out on our local cable station, we will have lessons provided. So you do not have to have a computer or internet. You can go and turn on your TV and we will be providing content to our public access television stations. So we hopefully will have that up next week. Next slide, please. EL Expeditionary Learning. Again, we have several schools that is their focus and so the curriculum department looked for the best resources out there specifically to this model. Next slide, please. The next few slides are just community resources that are out there from Scholastic to our local library, science, the Cincinnati Zoo. So we want to get this information out to our families so they can have these other resources to support them at home. Next slide, please. Outdoor learning. Again, things people can do at home and keep our kids moving, learning, and excited about learning. So this is another resource. Next slide. Social emotional learning. So this is a video here that I will not share, but this will be also shared with our families. And if you go to the next slide, there's lots of resources here, but if you look at the fourth bold statement down, parents and resources on talking to children about COVID-19. Our kids are watching. They have questions. So we wanted to provide resources for families to help them through these conversations. So some is from Children's Hospital, local resources, some are national resources here and then we have some resources that are translated into Spanish as well. Next slide, please. These are some crisis support hotlines that we will also provide our families with from domestic violence, mental health support, suicide prevention. So we will get this in the hands of our families as well. Just want to reinforce our parents and our administrators are available, sorry, our teachers and our administrators are available to our parents. We may not have all of the answers, but we want to keep them informed and ensure as soon as we get the answers, we will get back to them. Next slide, please. Looking ahead. Next slide, please. If we should return summer learning, it's already prepared and ready to go. However, if not, we are working currently on a plan for summer learning, remote summer learning with our curriculum department. But if we should return, we are ready to go and have those support programs in place to get started. When students return for the start of the school year in the fall, before we get to the academics, it is important that we build, continue to build a relationship with our students and support them through this. We are expecting for them to have questions and to figure out how to transition back and we don't want to just jump automatically straight into the academics. Our teachers, our principals will have permission to build those relationships. And although we are going to be flexible with our curriculum pacing, we have to address those needs and make sure that our kids are healthy emotionally. What the curriculum department is prepared to do is to provide professional development to our teachers, to address the curriculum pacing and how do we accelerate some of the learning that we have to make up? And then also using our MAP data. So we do plan to test our kids on MAP to identify the gaps so we can provide interventions. So this slide is very similar to the last, but it includes the professional development and we will have days throughout the year so we can have time and teachers can have time with each other to support each other as we change the scope and sequence of the curriculum and have discussion on how it's going throughout the year. Next slide. I believe that concludes. Oh, this is, the next few slides are the frequently asked questions. One is around the work our social workers are doing. So they are also calling some students that are specifically on their caseload, making sure that they are okay. And sharing SEL and mindfulness with our staff and administration. We are providing virtual PD. Next slide. Department of Student Services is working hard to ensure that we are still holding all ETRs and IEP meetings. We are still supporting our students with IEPs and there are resources in place for our students with disabilities, our English language learners, and our gifted students. And they are working and also participating in PD to support our students and some of the resources are around translation support for teachers when calling or documents and then the resources to support them to conduct virtual meetings. Next slide, please. A huge shout out to Josh Harden and his team and Shawna Murphy for leading this work on the Collaborate and Care Campaign. Just such wonderful examples of the community uniting and supporting our families. Cincinnati Bell, PNG, Children's Hospital, GE, and Staples have been great partners in this work and have donated items such as food, toiletries, and cleaning supplies. And this is also talking about our credit recovery and just focusing on our students to ensure that they are prepared and ready to graduate and are prepared for three E's of their choice. And we just want them to know that there's hope, we are supporting them, and whatever they need, we are there to help them. And so the credit recovery is one example of how we're doing this. Next slide. Graduation. Graduations have been canceled for the May ceremonies. CPS is working to reschedule graduations for June or July. If the stay at home order is lifted, we will keep our families and students updated on new dates for graduation. Next slide. And that concludes my portion of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiana. So you can see that we've put a lot of time and effort. It's not perfect and we're taking suggestions and thoughts from board members. I want to do a shout out to board member Lindy. She and I had a conversation yesterday and in the spirit of being authentic, he pushed my thinking on some issues and this is really the time for us to be innovative and so we're happy always to have the feedback and have the conversation and the dialogue. One thing I did not mention in the operations part of the presentation is the fact that tomorrow morning we will have a succession plan for the district. So in the event that any one of us becomes sick, we know who's next in line to be able to take our place and cover us, from me all the way down through our teachers and our buildings. And so just a reality that we need to be prepared for. But we've put a lot of systems and structures in place so that quite honestly, we should just be able to roll with it and we are so connected to each other right at this moment that we know what the next thing to do is and our thinking is just very much aligned. So earlier on the kudos section, I was given kudos and though the kudos really don't belong to me, I am one person. The team that has done this work is just absolutely phenomenal. No matter what is thrown at them, they have this I can do attitude and it has just been a breath of fresh air to work with them and to see how everyone has come together and really demonstrate leadership, not only on the PLT level, but throughout the entire organization. Our teachers, our principals, our paraprofessionals, our people who go and serve the meals, it is a collective effort. I am one single person and I'm just extremely honored to have the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent and other members of the leadership team. We will now open to the board members the opportunity for questions and comments. Mr. Morowski followed by Ms. Bowers.
First off, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much, Sarah and Laura and Tiana and everybody that was extremely helpful and insightful and just want you all to know that the information and your foresight and again, not to beat the dead horse, but agility has really helped me in my role as board member is keeping the community informed. And at the risk of getting back into kudos, it really is astounding that we are able to put as many fears to bed as we are because of the preparation. So thank you so much and that presentation was awesome. I only have a couple of questions and they're all brief and they were addressed, all of them were sort of addressed and if there is more clarity, great. If there's not, that's fine too. One of them, one of my questions is around the Focus Three piece, the policy piece. And we talked about a lot of enrollment things and I'm curious for like pre-K kids who got interrupted and again, if this is for a later time, that's fine, but pre-K kids who got interrupted this year. I know the fall is going to look different for everybody, obviously. I assume they're part of the conversation and like enrollment, I saw enrollment for Magnet and all of that is the same thing for pre-K. Is that being extended or changed at all?
I'm going to ask Tiana to speak to that. In addition to, there were some questions that came up regarding PK around tuition payment. And so I'm going to ask for Tiana to speak to the instructional piece and Jen to speak to the payment piece.
As far as the instruction, we have lots of resources right now. However, going into the next school year, we are planning and doing a lot with our teacher leads to support and get some lessons out and we're looking at possible ways for summer learning, which typically we do not do, but how can we close the gap? It may be a funding issue, but what we want to do is to provide a variety of opportunities as soon as we get back of how we can support our little people. And so Vera Brooks is working with her team. Right now, the priority has been to set up a library using YouTube because they can do some really cool interactive stuff on that platform. But we are hoping that we can do some summer learning work to help bridge these gaps.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then my other question is, it's kind of two questions, I guess, but all around the Focus Five and access and all of that. So one is a broad kind of question and one is specific. The broad question is Schoology, I know, has encountered some issues in the past couple of days and I am not an IT person, but what I kind of intuit is that some of our families may not be operating with the same sort of internet capability as other families and wondering if we've already gotten with Cincinnati Bell to see. I mean, we have free Wi-Fi now, but maybe upping the packages or if those conversations are occurring, if they should occur, if that is part of, I'll stop there. Is that, am I right in thinking it'd be part of the issue?
Yes, they are occurring and some of it too, I think it's the traffic that's happening. So we're looking at, and I'm not an IT person, but the last thing I heard was server and getting more, I don't know, power for the server, but there's a lot of traffic right now.
Cool.
Sarah, can Sarah chime in to support you, board member Morowski? Sarah, sorry.
Sure. So the only thing that I would add to what Tiana mentioned is that we are working with both Cincinnati Bell and Spectrum who are offering our families opportunities for connectivity, free connectivity. And so we're working, I know Jeremy Gollihue is working on how to get that word out in combination with the Remote Learning Plan. And then Tiana is correct, Schoology is receiving much more traffic than it could ever have been anticipated as well as some of these video conferencing systems that you might have experienced. They also did not see this coming and so everyone in that kind of boat is working diligently to add capacity to be able to handle the traffic that they're experiencing now.
Cool. And then my last one, thank you Sarah and Tiana and Laura. My last one is the more specific. This was born out of a task force that I'm on regarding family homelessness and we talked about kids experiencing homelessness a little bit. Something I did not know until this morning was that the family shelters are putting families in hotels for safety reasons and for social distance purposes. The challenge, well, it's manifold, but the challenge that it poses for the working on our work is that in the hotels don't have computers the families can access. Maybe it's not even a question as much as it is just me letting folks know, like there are 19 families with kids from Bethany House in a hotel right now. And if they were Bethany House, they would have it. So if it's not something that's on the list of Focus Five, I just wanted to kind of throw it out there is it's something I didn't think of, I didn't even know about till this morning. So they have no way to really access anything right now for the time being.
Thank you, board member Morowski. That is something that we'll look into. Shawna Murphy, are you on the line and can you speak to that since Project Connect is under your purview?
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. So I will definitely speak with Rebecca Ruckel. We speak almost every day about students experiencing homelessness. So I will definitely talk with her first thing in the morning. So I will definitely talk with her first thing in the morning and find out the status of devices for families in that situation.
Appreciate y'all. Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you. Ms. Bowers, you need to unmute.
Hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you Deputy Superintendent Ahmadi and Superintendent Mitchell. I really like all the information around the professional development and giving our kids a chance to kind of decompress when they come back and we join up together. That's very important and I appreciate you all even thinking ahead like that, thinking that we can't be ready for the abstract until we have all the basic things taken care of. And I like that the social workers are calling in addition to the teachers and checking on the socio-emotional wellness and mental health strength of our kids and families during this time. I have two questions for you guys and one is in regards to special ed. Deputy Superintendent Ahmadi, you spoke on other resources for families. I do know that with the packets, because they're general for general ed students, parents were receiving grade level packets that didn't really go with their IEP. So that, I've heard some concerns about what do I do with this and even having access to reaching out to teachers knowing to do that. Because as you know, not a lot of our parents are signed up for Schoology, they're not signed into Schoolology. So how do they access teachers to even get the information for their special ed student who's in eighth grade, but they're not at the eighth grade level? So, and which were the packets that were available? The second question is, what happens when the packets are complete? Now you mentioned that there are new packets that are coming out on Monday, but for families that are getting the packets, how will teachers be able to obtain the packets, decipher if, you know, is there going to be a grade for those packets? What, what direction are families supposed to do when the packets are complete?
I'm going to speak briefly and then I'll also open it up to Ms. Bunty. For Monday, the distribution will be K through 12. So they can pick up the packet based on their kid's need. So they will have some flexibility there. My recommendation, and hopefully it has already been done, we've been on spring break last week, but this week, teachers are calling and making those connections, including intervention specialists to have those conversations and hold those office hours to provide support and to differentiate those packets a bit, depending on what's on their IEP. I will allow Susan to speak on other supports for students, students with disabilities.
Hi, Board Member Bowers. Thank you for bringing up that question. It's nice to see everyone. Hi. As far as our students with disabilities, our teachers are obligated, as you all know, to provide and to continue to provide specially designed instruction as we go forward during this time. So the Secretary of Education has indicated to us that we need to give it our best faith effort to really make sure that we are providing as much as we can in these unprecedented times. So as such, we're making a very large iPad purchase to be able to support many of our learners who may not have access at home, who have disabilities. I believe that recommendation is in the Treasurers Report actually tonight, so you will see that going forward. Yes, ma'am. And so those aren't solely for kids with disabilities, just in all transparency, but they, many of them will be to be able to support that work. In addition to the intervention specialists supporting that SDI instruction around IEPs, we have our students with disabilities managers who are actively working to support the teachers in these new delivery systems as well.
Any clarification about what a family does once they finish the current packet? And how does that get back to teachers? How does that get, I mean, what do they do with those?
We are not grading those packets. However, that's where the feedback comes in. So if they do not have virtual access, we are working on teleconferencing, so holding conversations. So if a parent is there or a student is there and say, I don't understand this question, or the teachers have access to the packet and can walk the students through, through teleconferencing, but we will not be grading or collecting the packets.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Bolton followed by Mr. Messer.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of things. First of all, I appreciate the use by the Superintendent of the word "hope" and would refer to another poem as well, which is from Emily Dickinson who says that, you know, "Hope is a thing of feathers," meaning that the bird sings brightest and fuller and fullest in a gale. And that's sort of where we are. So I appreciate the poetic reference and I think it lifts us up. I have a stupid kind of technical question compared to poetry, and that is the 2.3 million financial impact regarding student dining services? Why is that an increase of cost? If you could explain that to us or possible increase of cost?
So hopefully Jessica Shelley is on the phone and she can explain that. Jessica?
Yes. Good evening, Board Member Bolton. The $2.3 million increase, it's not really an increase in cost, it's a loss of revenue. At this time, we're still paying all of employees their regular salary, but we are not receiving the amount of revenue we normally do on a regular basis from the USDA for our service of breakfast and lunch to our children. Right now, we're serving about 7% to 10% of the normal meals we serve on a daily basis. So our revenues are much, much less, which actually gives us a net loss for each month.
Thank you. That makes complete sense. I appreciate it. And then on student dining services as well, the number of meals that have been served, are we comfortable with the number? I see there's been somewhat of an increase over the time, but are there other ways or are we contemplating other ways to increase that service? Or do you think we need to or are we even able to?
Thank you for that question again, Board Member Bolton. Right now, we are completely maxed out on the number of meals we can provide to our students each day. We're operating out of our test kitchen that we've converted to a packing kitchen. And then all of the meals that we pack up are loaded into four of our refrigerated trucks. We're able to pack up 4,800 meal packs each time we're out for service and we are at max capacity. We have reached out, there are several other community organizations that are approved through USDA and ODE to also provide the same type of meals that we currently do to communities, scholars throughout our area. And so we've reached out to them to see if they can partner with us to provide additional locations where our students can access meals.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that makes sense. That's great. Another one on the purchasing piece, I see that we are under review regarding the $200,000 contracts that are district wide. I, just as one board member, I would also hope that we are reviewing smaller contracts that are at the school site. I think we all know that this is a health crisis right now and an instructional crisis, but it is soon to be a financial crisis. And would hope that as we look through all this, we send it back to the schools to really review their contracts that they have at the site level. Another quick thing, the budget development, I really appreciate everybody being able to move ahead on that. I am concerned that we did have some construction that we wanted to try to get done and I guess we can talk about that at another meeting, but in order to meet the needs of increased seats, because we might actually have more kids coming than we even anticipate because of this problem, because some of the charter schools and other schools might not be able to cope with what's just happened and may not have the finances. I hope we're, we can talk later about the construction stuff that we had hoped, I guess that, I know Mr. Messer was very interested in LEAP and I know I'm concerned about the gym program and what have you, or gym building at the, at Campbell, but we can talk about that later. I'm just, unless the Superintendent wants to address it now, I know we're limited as to what we can do because of the quarantine, so to speak, but I hope we're not missing that opportunity to move ahead on seats.
So if I could just address your, your thoughts very quickly. So let me go back just for a moment on the meal hub situation. So you can see the numbers, the daily numbers. And so we have analyzed that and we have a recommendation that came to our team this morning, which is in your board memo that I sent out today, probably while we were sitting here, you received it. Our recommendation is that we actually close two of the meal hubs, looking at the number of kids who are going to those hubs. However, with closing two hubs, we're actually looking at opening another site that's in between the two locations that we believe more kids may come to there. And so we won't limit the meals we're getting out, we're just going to switch to a different location based upon the numbers of meals that are going out each day. In addition, we're also going to address the hours that the meals will be distributed. We have been addressing or giving them out between 11:00 and 1:00 and our recommendation is to do from 11:00 to 12:00 because that's when most families come. And so just being a lot more efficient in using the data to guide our work. That's an update in terms of the meal service program and you'll see that in the memo that I sent to you today. In terms of contracts, the 200,000 and up, that was just our first starting place in terms of priority, but PLT will be looking at the requisitions Monday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday as a team and deciding which ones move forward and which ones do not. We are trying to, quite honestly, have enough safe cost savings this year to be able to fund some projects for next year, especially considering the fact that some projects are not moving forward this year because of the stay at home order. And then the fourth, the third area that you talked about are construction projects. And so we've identified the high priority construction projects that we'll be moving forward on for next school year. What we do want to do is make sure that we're moving forward, adhering to the mandate from the governor in terms of stay at home, other than the most critical or essential functions. And also at the same time, not tax our people out. So in a spirit of like real transparency, we overpromised on Mercy last year and literally that the team of people worked 24 hours around the clock to get that school open, in addition to opening the elementary school. And so I want to be sensitive to knowing when I'm pushing too hard and to let up off the gas a little bit and to really put a priority to the work. So we'll be talking with you a little bit later about the prioritization of the construction projects and they are really centered around doing those things that cause a safety issue first.
Thank you. The, the last thing then for the question is, as we are able to look at the technology and as principals are able to watch the instructors at their sites, are we using the technology that we have to make sure that, that all of our employees and as many families as possible are, are indeed doing what we are promising the community that we're doing?
So I'll ask our Deputy Superintendent to chime in on that. I will say that we do have a one-to-one initiative at 4th through 12th grade, but that doesn't mean that those devices are at home. So some schools have a take-home program, others do not. We would have probably been a little bit better positioned to get technology out the door, but we thought we would have one more day. So if you remember, we closed, you know, on the 13th of March, that Friday was our last day. We had really intended for that Monday to be our last day, but because of all of the linkage, the people who thought they had COVID-19 linking up from school to school to school, I kept getting so many calls over the weekend that we decided to close. So we are really looking at how we might be able to deploy some devices beyond the 4,000 iPads that Susan Bunty talked about. It means that our staff, our IT staff would have to get into the schools and be able to retrieve the devices and to be able to update them and put all of the security measures in place for them to be a take-home device. So we're looking at that, but at the same time, we're looking at, quite honestly, what's the cost in terms of if we deploy, and I'm making this up, 10,000 devices and I only get 5,000 back in August, in which some are broken, some are lost, some are stolen. And so we're really just weighing all of those things, but we'll have a better idea of what we're going to do when we hear from Jeremy Gollihue, who is our interim IT chief on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Messer and Ms. Lee and Mr. Lindy and myself.
And, you know, just quickly say thank you to everyone for the presentation. Lots of detail here in these uncertain times, so thank you for that. And Board Member Bolton kind of covered a little bit of where my concern was and that was, you know, I've gotten lots of questions on that very, the question she just raised and that is, you know, what percentage of our children do we know have an electronic device in their possession today, whether it's home that they, they had or they have a CPS? Do we know what that number is?
So we do not know that number in terms of how many of the kids have their own devices at home. We do not know that number as of yet.
So, and, you know, I think that, you know, thinking more long-term, but I don't, and I also don't know what percentage of our families that we have an email address for. But assuming that we have some at least, you know, I think it might be interesting to do an inventory, a parent survey where we could kind of assess current state in some of their homes. You know, do they have a mobile device, et cetera? And that might allow us to target like specific parts of our community where we would need to focus or specific schools. But then we could assess, you know, the various situations because, you know, lots of parents might be out of work, but also a lot of parents are working from home and so they're still trying to do their eight-hour-a-day job. I mean, we're like on our fifth or sixth homeschool teacher already, lots of turnover around here. But, you know, what I, I've learned is not, you know, it's a lot of work and I've been up till midnight trying to pull things together so that there would be something to do. And I have a printer at home and I have this. So I think, you know, if there's a way to do a, a survey that we could roll it up through the district to say, we know that 80% of our kids have an electronic device and we're able to engage with them that way, or 60%, and then, or maybe, maybe it's 70, whatever that is. And so then we have a mitigation plan that's less than that because, you know, I think this is to my other question, you know, based on your conversations with the state, have they given any indication as to when there might be a final decision on how we will address the rest of the school year?
So in terms of the state, I actually was on a call today with superintendents around the state and Senator Sherrod Brown and have a contact with someone who's close in the governor's office to find out what the governor's thought is about the rest of the school year. At this point, he isn't willing to make a decision beyond May 1st. But I will say that I think that the governor has done a really good job all along the way, giving us cues and hints as to decisions he's going to make. First with closing schools down, then with the beauty salons and then, you know, restaurants. And so he's been giving us clues all along. And so considering the fact that the, the wave is not supposed to hit until the end of April, beginning of May, I would imagine we will not be back in session before the end of the school year. end of the school year. That that's my, that's my guess based upon when the wave is going to hit. You also kind of just look at and consider, and I watch his, the governor's briefings almost every day, but he has the National Guard all geared up in terms of food distribution and creating these hospitals. Duke Energy Center, they're getting ready to open up a mobile hospital. And so I think that, you know, we're waiting for this, this onslaught of illnesses to take place. And I don't believe, I could be wrong, but I don't believe we'll be prepared to open on May 1st. That's just my thought.
I I tend to agree with that. And I think that, you know, with that kind of base assumption and knowing that we may now have eight plus weeks of time, you know, I think the the more we could engage with the parents through some sort of survey assessment, I think that would allow us to think really specifically on that equity lens. And and, you know, I think there's been tons of people who have been willing to volunteer, and I'm sure every board member's had those calls. But my question is, where we do have those gaps, could we pair up volunteers with some of these children who have maybe two parents working from home or one parent that's a healthcare provider that's gone and they're, you know, it provides instability and maybe give that as an option for some of the parents? I think there would be support in the community. At least I've, I've received lots of notes from that standpoint.
So we're open to that idea. At the same time, though, we're really being very conscious of not spreading a virus through unintended, you know, intentions. And so that's why even at our food distribution center, when you come there to volunteer, like Dan Hoing volunteered there the other day, his temperature had to be checked beforehand. And so what we don't want to do is expose kids and expose adults unknowingly. And so I think a lot of people are just very, very fearful of that and very mindful of that. So.
Yeah, and I was, I was. Yeah, I was speaking more of an electronic connection.
Oh, 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 got it.
Yeah.
Got it.
If we do find out, you know, let's say the survey says they have an electronic device where they could do FaceTime or one of the platforms. And they they check the box, yes, they could use some extra support because of their working conditions, then maybe that would be a place to do a match. But I'm just trying to think through some of these places that I know parents are struggling, trying to figure out how to continue with their work life and meet the needs of their child. And I think it just creates a whole issue of further challenging some of our children who can least afford it, frankly. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's good. So please, no, Board Member Messer, I'm writing all of this down and we'll follow up with all of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, followed by Mr. Lindy.
Yes, hi. Thanks for for all the presentation, all these great follow up questions. My question is around the accountability for the academics. I know that we have, we can't have a one size fits all. We have so many different programs out in in our schools. But who determines the accountability at the building level to ensure that all kids are receiving instruction in some way? For instance, keeping track of contact with students to make sure everyone has some contact, or if they're not, to figure out a way to follow up. Also, you know, some schools may decide to have dedicated office hours so parents know when teachers are available. So who's, who's making those decisions? And are we compiling, no, the reach?
Yes, absolutely. I have developed today with my, working with the DSLs, a form, it's a log. And we're doing it through Google Form because afterwards we can bring all of the data together to determine how many people were supported using Schoology or Zoom. Then we have some wellness questions for the phone conferences. Did you eat today? Did you sleep today? How was your day? So some questions that we're going to have standardized, and then we're going to collect that. That email is going out tomorrow to all of our staff. I was just waiting for ITM to close up the directions on how to use their phones where their numbers are not, private numbers are are being shown. So that is going out tomorrow morning, and we will use a Google Form. And then the principals will have access and they will see all of their teachers, all of their kids. And then we will use that data for future use as well.
Enter follow up. I mean, there may be some kids who aren't reached. So will this collection of data determine who who's being reached and who isn't?
Correct. And so along with that is the, the principals are still holding staff meetings. So making sure that we share that information with our school social workers. So another layer of support. But the the first thing is to have that tool so we can collect all of that information in in one place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lindy? Mr. Lindy?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute myself. Hang on.
You're there. Matt, you, you need to unmute.
I am trying. You can hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Outstanding. It still looks red on my screen, but I'm going to keep talking until you all interrupt me. Great. So I I wanted to share primarily some just positive feedback on things coming through this plan that I think are very inspiring and great progress. I have one additional piece of feedback and then a bunch of the questions I had other people have covered, and so I won't, I won't repeat them. But on the, on the positive side, I think it is so great to see big picture values that we care about and want to go for. Like, I love the piece about a caring community of adults, about hope and about learning. But this is about more than just compliance and making sure that we're just doing the legal minimum. I think that is the right way for our district to show up in a time of crisis. I think that's great. I love the systematic thinking through that, the kind of hierarchy of needs for the district. I thought that looked really great and very strategic. I love that we're looking at, you know, under what conditions can we make the school based health centers open and really looking at distributing food to families from from just basic student health and safety. Team, Tiana, you and your team, because doing this has has required incorporating very quickly a rapidly evolving context where state laws are changing day over day and week over week. And I just want to commend you and your team for being so on top of all those things. And it seems creative, like I love the idea about lessons on public access television. I thought that was great. I had not thought about that. And I I think it's it's also inspiring to hear the way in which the administration is trying to figure out who has devices, who doesn't have devices, where food centers should stay open, where they should get closed, so we can reach as many kids as possible. I think all that is great. Can you all still hear me?
We can, yes.
Great, great. You're all frozen on my screen, but I'm glad that you can hear me. So all those, I think, are are really outstanding and and great pieces of this that I want to make sure don't get lost. So thank you for all of that. I think the only piece of of like constructive feedback I want to offer is I feel like we could, you know, challenge ourselves to be even a bit bolder against some of those values that you outlined at the beginning, Laura, the community of caring adults, hope and learning, by setting some outcomes. Like, what if, if, over the course of this crisis, CPS really does show up as a caring community of adults? What would that look like concretely in terms of a set of goals? And the reason I like that is I think it 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 would just challenge us to 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 think rigorously about, yeah, there are, there are a million constraints and a million challenges out there, and we should be clear eyed about them. And yet, there's, there's a certain sweet spot of of what it would look like for us to challenge ourselves while also being honest about what what the conditions around us are. And then we could go after it together. And I think so what that could look like, you know, each week, what percent of kids do we want to make sure has a conversation with an adult? And I know we want that to be every kid, but I think that that's a little bit different from having a goal and seeing if we can go hit it. On on the the hope front, I mean, this could be, you know, the number of of stories we share out about incredible educators within CPS through different, you know, media channels. Or on on student learning, it could be, you know, the number of students who are engaged in either, you know, submitting packets or engaging in online learning. There are probably a million ways to do it. But I think that the push I wanted to offer is, could we set some goals for what, you know, like a stretch but realistic set of outcomes would be for the crisis? That that was, that was the thought. And the last just question I wanted to flag is for for things like the packets and the online learning modules. I was curious, are they, are they available in Spanish? Are they available in large print settings for kids whose IEPs require those things? And then everything else I was going to mention has been covered.
Thank you.
We have not.
The whole, Ms. Ms. Ama, go ahead.
We have not printed the learning packets in a second language. However, there are translation services available. We are looking at other tools and resources for some of our online lessons that can be provided in a second language. But I will make note of of that to see if we can can do that for upcoming weeks, just translate some of the packets now.
Okay, thank you. So and and, yeah, go ahead, Superintendent.
All right, thank you. So I just want to say that, Board members, I have taken notes on everything that you say, you've said and highlighted those things that we need to follow up on. And so we will be following up on many of the things that you've given us suggestions around. I love this idea of outcome based measures as it relates to those three big values. And so if I could just tell PLT just really quickly, start to think about the data we could collect around the caring adults touching kids in an academic way, the learning engagement of our kids, and then shared stories around hope and be prepared on Friday for us to talk about it so that we can start to move on these things. So excellent suggestions from everyone. Thank you so much.
I I still have my questions. I still have a couple of questions. Mr. Morosky, do you have additional questions as well? Okay, you you can go ahead. Go ahead with your question.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Something I forgot to ask about with the, the, all the new passage of laws and policies and the the one regarding buses transporting food, is that feasible in our district? Is it something we've thought about, something that is too costly? I'm just, I I haven't heard much about it. I'm just curious where we were on that, if anywhere.
So we have discussed it a number of times. Jessica Shelley, can you chime in on this one?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent. I have been in contact with many districts throughout the Council of Great City Schools to get feedback on this option. And most of them are not implementing the bus option because of the challenge of being able to reach kids at a time that is always consistent. And if we have food that's on a bus going out to different locations, if a child happens to miss that time, the bus stops there, then there's no other opportunity for them to get a meal other than that time the bus came by. So most large urban school districts are going to centralize locations where food can be distributed versus a bus that would actually be going out into a neighborhood. The bus route has been shown to be effective in a rural area where there's not a lot of transportation to a school, but in most urban areas, they are not using the bus route.
Thanks, Jessica.
Okay. And then finally, I had a number of questions, most of which have been asked and answered. I did want to go back because in the first question around pre-K, we did not give Ms. Wagner an opportunity to respond to the pre-K payment piece. So that would be my first question is to ask if we could address that. Ms. Wagner?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question? It was about paying United Way or about families?
I believe it was families, specific to family.
Right. So we were getting a lot of questions about whether families should keep paying tuition while we're not in certain, in school. And we told them no. And that whenever we stop being closed, we'll do a reconciliation and refund families as appropriate if if they'd already paid for days that we didn't instruct. And so we're preparing to do that.
And and are we notifying those preschool families of that decision?
Yes, Mrs. Brooks is written communication and working with our Public Affairs Communications Department to get that out. And it's posted on our website under the FAQs.
Okay, thank you. And then another very specific question is around the Walnut Hills test. Is is there a second test scheduled or will there be an opportunity for a second test? And with that, are there acceptance letters going out or letters going out, I should say, around that?
All of our Walnut Hills testing was completed. We did two for the year and letters have went out.
Great, thank you. And then finally, just a comment to kind of pull all this together, very, this was an excellent conversation. Excellent, excellent questions and the responses, very, very appropriate. There are community members who are still asking questions about how they could get involved. And this is more of a statement to kind of close it out. Because I think that our hashtag CPS United really speaks to not only the district, but the broader community and our families. And so the question of, well, what can we do as community members? I think, and I'm just saying this as one person, but I think that the district is certainly doing anything and everything possible that we can think of to make sure that our kids are are still learning and that we want them to come back whenever schools open, we want them to come back again, prepared and ready to learn. So I would say, remember that it still takes a village, but also to that if you have personal relationships with these kids, give them a text. And and especially our high schoolers, because when we talk about access and equity, personally, I'm more concerned about our young adults who may not have quite the same type of structure that some of our younger grades do. But if you have a relationship with them and you can text them, check to make sure that they have access to all the resources that are being provided, check in with them. I think Ms. Ama spoke to check to see if they're okay. If there's anything that can be helpful to them in terms of providing information about where they can get all of this information, is it on a text? Is it through Schoology? Just keep reminding them. And I say that because, you know, again, I think the level of supervision in the home is different for our young, young adults than it is for the younger kids. So again, this was an excellent update and an excellent conversation and really appreciate everything in in terms of where everybody's thinking is and what the district is doing. So appreciate that. Okay. Okay, so let's move on to board matters. And I believe, Ms. Bolton, you're going to present the first item on the job description for Audit Committee Chair.
Yes, thank you. We do have a difference of operations right now, and it's been suggested that indeed we endorse the Audit Committee's suggestion for a chair as well as have an actual job description for the Audit Committee Chair. That committee is becoming so representative of our That committee is becoming so representative of our community and so insightful with a lot of expertise that we just want to say that we'd like to ultimately endorse a job description. They are not employees. They are part of the community. And by charter, they can't be employees of the district. But we think that it's important. I think the treasurer would suggest that it's important that we do that. I know the internal auditor. And so as we get to the resolutions, we can speak a little bit more to that. But right now, it's a change of operations to create a job description for the Audit Committee Chair and also for the board to endorse the Audit Committee's selection of their chair. But we can get more into that as we get to the resolutions. And I know Ms. Bates has been very much involved with the Audit Committee for a number of years, the treasurer as well. So if they would like to speak to that, they can. But it just will be bringing that forward in a resolution today. And then the job description itself will go through finance and then to the board.
Great. Any comment, Ms. Bates or Ms. Wagner on that point? Okay, thank you. So and so we do have resolutions related to that that we can open discussion if we need to. All right, so in our board work priorities, I think that we, the board needs to have a conversation about how we move forward. I mean, clearly, it's important for us to have our meetings. We need to maybe get some ideas if people have different thoughts about how we proceed. And I'm thinking specifically, there are, there, I have several things. I've written down several things that I think are important, and then board members can chime in if there are other things that you want to add. But first of all, we were scheduled to have our public budget hearing today. But because this is our trial run and we decided to, through conversation with our finance chair and our treasurer, we decided that maybe we needed to rethink that timeline. So we, I'm going to ask Ms. Wagner in a second to comment on that. But we also need to talk about how are we going to manage committee work and meetings? Our board meetings, I'm assuming this trial run is going well. So I'm assuming we'll continue to meet for our regular board meetings. But then we also have two meetings coming up that we need to have discussion about. One is the CPS CPP joint meeting, which I have thought about. And then the other one is our board work session. So let me, let me stop there, go back to Ms. to Treasurer Wagner and ask her to comment about the budget hearing timeline.
Yes, thank you, President Jones. So you're right, we did have the initial budget hearing scheduled for today, and we decided to postpone it. Our processes slowed down, our development process has slowed down just a little bit. We focused our efforts on making sure that students are being supported and instructed and all of essential functions are operating in a remote fashion. We want to make sure we were still paying our employees and our vendors. Excuse me. So but we are rescheduling the, tentatively scheduling the next hearing for April 22nd. It's a Wednesday at 4:00 PM. We plan to create the PowerPoint and then record my voice over it and post it on the website so parents can follow along with that. Then we were going to offer thought exchange as a feedback tool for our public to respond to after that presentation for about a week. And then we'll address those questions and concerns and suggestions on the second public hearing. Hopefully, that'll be in May 6, I believe, another four o'clock meeting. So we're still on target to try to get board approval by the end of May so that we can load and approve budget into our business function system or accounting system so that our schools and departments can start requisitioning against that to get their contracts moving for the new fiscal year, assuming that we're all operating again. There's been a slight twist to our budget process this year in terms of disclosure and projects that can't be done that were intended to be funded this year. And so we have to decide what are we going to do about those? There's also going to be some money that we won't spend simply because we're not spending at the same rate, like electricity or heat, for example, because we're not operating. So we're trying to figure out how all that fits into next year's budget using an abundance of caution in that we recognize the current economic state will provide a economic downturn towards in a secondary fashion to us. So in other words, as our families who might have been laid off or in furloughed, their ability to pay their property taxes for our levies and then the state's ability to collect income taxes. So if people aren't working, their incomes are going to go down. We don't know what that's going to look like for the state foundation payments. We know that there's promises of pandemic financial support. We don't know any details of what that looks like yet. And so we're trying to be very conservative and paying only for emergent issues to support the pandemic closure and maintaining a healthy cash balance so that we are stable in next year's budget.
All right.
So any other questions? Any questions? Did I miss anything?
Okay, board members, any, any questions or reaction to that? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I think that the superintendent and the treasurer have been really insightful and organized about this. I think it's a very aggressive schedule to think that we will be passing the budget at the same time that we will be passing the five-year forecast. And I've had that discussion with the treasurer. I have an interest feeling very strongly that this is a financial problem for us for this coming year, that indeed that perhaps the Finance Committee would remotely, virtually, whatever, meet as scheduled on the 16th. I am in question of this president as to, are we having the work session that I think was scheduled on the 18th? And then we also have an Audit Committee meeting somewhere in late April, the 22nd or the 23rd. There's, there's a, there's a cluster of meetings that are specifically financial, I think, especially if we use part of our retreat to talk about that, where there's going to be some really big decisions that need to be made financially, or at least going forward. Not yes to that dollar or no to that dollar, but actually, what's the big picture financially? And I do think that we have this opportunity as a board and administration to get together to really kind of hash some of this out.
Right.
So I encourage as many meetings as possible and also including our Audit Committee meeting somehow being worked out in some way, shape or form to bring them along or for them to help guide us.
Yes, I, Ms. Bolton, I agree with you. I had not, I just put it out there for, to open for discussion. I was not, I mean, suggesting that we cancel. I'm just, I was just saying, we need to decide, are we going to move forward? And it, you know, and I think it makes sense to do that. I think it's just your reference, Ms. Bolton, to the committees. I also happen to believe that the committees need to meet. I mean, you know, it's business as usual. We now have a format that we can, where we can have our meetings. And so it would be feasible for us to do that. The, the one meeting, also, let me back up a minute. I think that I mentioned the CPS CPP joint meeting. I would suggest rescheduling that meeting, but not canceling the meeting of the Tax Levy Committee that was established in partnership with CPP. So I don't know what the schedule for those meetings are, but I think that those are much more critical to this upcoming levy than having that joint collaborative meeting. But that's just my thoughts. So I'm open to hearing other ideas and thoughts about that. Any thoughts? Okay, so then let me go ahead, Ms. Bates. You have to unmute, unmute.
Okay, now I'm on mute. Can you hear me? Okay, good. Well, I, I don't think it's business as usual, but what I do think we need to do on a regular basis is communicate with the public. And I would challenge all of us to think of different ways to do that. You know, health and safety, that's probably better handled, you know. Updates, weekly updates. I know that we have some work underway, but pedestrian safety has been pushed off into the future right now with, with our committee that are, that is working with that committee. So I would challenge us not to do business as usual, but give people what they want to hear from us. And that's updates and reassurances and trying to figure out what kind of feedback we're getting from people out in the community and our families and how to address that.
Yes, I hear you, Ms. Bates. Business as usual, in my opinion, means exactly what you said. We got to figure out how to relate to the public as part of that. I do think I agree with Ms. Bolton, however, that finance, especially given that we have a levy on the ballot, I think there may be a need to have meetings. And so, you know, whether we use the Blue jean format or whatever, one of the things that is clear in my conversation with our technical folks who are helping us with this is, is the possibility and the potential for even have public comment through Blue jean. So we have been talking about that. So that's, that's just a piece of information to share at this time. So, so I agree with you on that. So, and then other options for how we get public input or feedback. So I agree. Ms. Bowers? Unmute.
I'm, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I agree with Board Member Bates. But with all of the overview that Deputy Superintendent Amat just provided us in her presentation, a lot of student achievement was in that. And trying to figure out, and I mean, the rationale of what we'll be meeting about, some of the things have been waived by the governor, the testing, the third grade reading, some of those things. Not real sure on what additional information or what we could be doing in student achievement that has not already been presented and really is kind of like void to date because of the crisis. So I'm not, yeah.
All right, other comments? Mr. Morosky, unmute?
Thanks, President Jones. I appreciate your saying, Ms. Bowers. And I feel, I feel like the committees, you know, as I kind of referencing kudos, everyone has had to pivot their jobs. Our jobs don't look the same way they did. And I'm talking about your job at Central Clinic, right? All of our jobs and our different, they all look different right now. And I'm thinking the committees might be a good place. I think they should meet. I know when we were talking at the beginning and Focus Three was policy and my ears perked up. And I would just like to offer up perhaps, you know, the committees, you know, in theory, the committees are supporting the work of the administration and everyone's working as a symbiotic unit always. Right now, to your point, Ms. Bowers, you said something to the effect of, you know, Ms. Amat, a lot of what she said was kind of what you, me and Ryan have been talking about in student achievement. Like maybe, and Ms. Bates said the same thing about health and safety. Maybe health and safety is a place for the superintendent to say, here's what's going on, here is where this, this action is needed now. I'd be willing to offer, you know, policy committee becomes policy of the fall. What do our policies need to look like and reflect in the fall to support our students? Or whatever it might be. I do think they should probably meet. It's going to look different. And with that being said, I think we should have our work session. I think we need to keep talking about the budget. The only thing with the CPP, it's a small question, is I'm just curious. I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other right now. My strong opinion lies with the levy renewal. And to that end, then, if that work can be done in the committee that was formed to talk about that, great. I guess my own question will be, what is CPP's temperature on meeting or not meeting? Or do they have one?
Well, I, I was actually waiting until we talked and then I was going to give the grammar call. But my sense about it is that they would probably be okay with that and agree that, that the meeting of the joint committee, the tax levy committee, is probably a lot more relevant and important to what, you know, the movement forward than the collaborative committee. Yeah. And we can always reschedule the collaborative for later date. Okay, so I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, okay, Ms. Bates, go ahead. You need to unmute, yeah.
Okay, if we are going to do the work session, why don't we just do that around finance?
Okay, she's asking that question, so.
And I'm on finance, but that way we can all participate in this new information that we're receiving. So finance and growth can be our work session work.
Okay, Ms. Bolton?
I would agree, since we've entered new territory, that that needs to be a large portion of what we do in that work session because we have all new realities now from a standpoint of the strategic plan and the revenue piece and our cost centers, as well as, you know, the levy renewal just got more complicated, very frankly, with the financial situation that we're in. So, or anticipate being in. And again, the county and the state financial presentations in the last week have been quite alarming, let alone the state financial picture. So I think it would, it would be well worth it for us to talk about the big picture financially, the growth effort and somehow finding a way to maintain moving forward with our strategic plan would be a good, a good use of our time.
Okay, Mr. Lindy?
I was just going to offer that I think there's probably a range of choices that we could make. And I'd like to throw my weight behind whatever is going to create the most space for the administration to be able to address the crisis. But I think there, I don't think there's one and only one way of doing that. But I think if we can minimize the amount of time that they need to spend prepping for and being in meetings with us, it will free them up more to focus on all the other critical stuff that's happening.
Great, okay. I mean, I, I think these suggestions are great. I think us trying to sort of bring it all together to kind of prioritize which, which agenda items, where our agenda items are, makes sense. But these, I think we're all okay with giving some focus on our board work sessions to some of the major pieces, the bigger picture pieces. Okay, so we're okay with that then? Are there any, in any, okay, but going back, okay, Superintendent, have, you have a question, comment? Unmute. We can't hear you.
There we go, sorry. Just a quick comment. I appreciate Board Member Lindy's comment. As you can imagine, we are literally working around the clock. And so it seems like maybe our less, our work is less because we're not at the office side. We're actually spending more time on calls and working on all the logistics to the wee hours of the morning. And so just any attention to that would be appreciated as we work through this really challenging time and not to overtax people and quite honestly burn them out. So thank you.
Okay, just, just in follow-up to that, your comment Superintendent, and given what Ms. Bates says, that this is not business as usual per se. But what if we, okay, if we were able, since we've identified some of those broad areas, since we've identified those, is there a way for us? I believe we have two more board meetings left in this month. I believe, I don't have my schedule in front of me. But would it be possible and would people be willing to just try to figure out how we bring all of these under just a regular board meeting agenda? And instead of meeting additionally on Saturday where we're spending six hours on this stuff, would that be an option that folks would want to consider? Ms. Bolton, I see you, Mr. Morosky.
I don't, I don't care how we organize it. But I would say that we I don't care how we organize it, but I would say that we have, because of the budget process, we have to have a public meeting regarding the budget. And I think we do have to have an opportunity for the public to participate by sending their suggestions. So I would hope that we would format whatever we're doing so that there is a presentation and a discussion about the budget that the public could at least see. And then would there be a delay, whether it's the May 6th or whether it's the, what, the 22nd or whatever that is, that the public would have had an opportunity to send their thoughts. I think that's essential. And it also helps us move again more towards a much more reasonable budget process.
Okay. That's fine. Any other comment then related to this topic? I think we can work on that. We can work on that. Superintendent Mitchell?
Yes. So I just wanted to have one point of clarification. My comment had nothing to do with the long work session. It was about all the committee meetings and expecting the administration to be in all the committee meetings. So that was just my, I wanted to clarify that. We are, I mean, we would, it's not our decision, but we would be good with a longer Saturday session. It's all the committee meetings because all the work we're trying to get done.
Yeah. That was my comment, reading into that. And the reality of it is, if we don't have to do a six-hour work session, if we can address what we need to address either in a shorter session or in the regular board meetings that we have, then, you know, that would be comfortable, I think, for everybody. Ms. Bolton?
I would, if we make the retreat or whatever, the work session, part of that would be finance, I'd actually prefer to have the whole board hear everything all at once to be able to talk as a full board. So I would be willing to forego the finance committee if indeed the work session is going to include that. I do want to have the public have an opportunity to send their thoughts to us as we develop the budget. And I feel pretty strongly about that. But I think the only thing I know for sure that Chairman Morosky is necessarily going to maybe have to do regarding the policy piece is this development in the teacher evaluation system. But that's later in this meeting that we'll introduce that thought. But yeah, maybe we don't, to Ms. Bates's point, maybe we don't have the committee meetings, but we focus our attention altogether on that particular Saturday meeting.
Okay. Any other comments related to that? Any other preferences? Okay. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I would just put another check mark by my name on that exact, you know, I think combining this, a one-stop shop for the administration to kind of be with us at one point. And I totally agree with Ms. Bolton there about just getting one update for the board. So I totally support that.
Okay, great. Got it. Okay. All righty. Anything else on the board matters that we perhaps did not cover? All right. So we can move on to our approving our resolutions. And Mr. Messer, on behalf of the board, would you please present the first resolution for board consideration? Mr. Messer?
Can you hear me?
This is the lighthouse one.
Yes. Is it going to be presented, be shown?
Yes. Yes.
There we have it. Okay.
No, not yet.
There it is.
There we go. So, Madam President, I would like to present the motion for Cincinnati Public Schools' resolution to purchase 6100 Desmond Street, also known as the Lighthouse School. And I present the resolution as written and seek approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bates. Any discussion? Discussion? Okay. Treasure Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Bolton, you have the next three resolutions. So if you could start us off with the submission of a renewal tax levy?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would submit and offer as a resolution, a resolution determining to proceed with the submission of a renewal levy, which speaks to the preschool CPS partnership that would then be on the ballot in November during this presidential year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second?
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Yes. Mr. Lindy?
Yeah, this is my first time through a levy as a board member. Can either President Jones or another board member just talk a little bit about how the language that's proposed here can and cannot change between now and its appearance on the ballot?
Okay. Either Treasure Wagner, maybe, or Ms. Bolton? Treasure Wagner?
I would go with Treasure Wagner or Mr. Hoynes.
Yeah. Dan, are you on? There you go. You want to start and then I'll complement?
And could the person controlling the screen scroll to the part where the language, I'll look at my next page.
Yes, I'm on. Is there a portion of the language that you want to review specifically, Board Member Lindy?
No, I mean, I had a conversation with Shara Jackson at CPP about, like, whether or not there should be language here that is about preschool in particular. And that seemed to be an important question. I don't feel at the moment ready to advocate for or against that, but I wanted to check to see whether there are opportunities to modify or update this language before it gets printed on ballot.
So, Mr. Hoynes, before you answer, can I chime in, please?
Yes, of course.
All right. Thank you. So Board Member Lindy, Shara Jackson did approach me about that, and I told her that Vera Brooks would be in communication with her. And so it's my understanding that Vera Brooks was in communication with her about this. So I'm just a little shocked that this is coming up at this time.
Oh, well, let me back up a second, Superintendent. It may be that, like, I talked to her prior to you two having that conversation. So like, this was from several, several days ago. So it's quite possible that you and she spoke subsequent to my conversation. I'm primarily interested in whether or not this, like, locks this in stone, this language, or whether it gets tweaked and modified between now and Election Day.
So this resolution, to respond to your question, this resolution along with the previous resolution passed by the board and the certification by the county auditor will be submitted to the Board of Elections. And once submitted, I don't think it can change. In the previous version, that five years ago, when we introduced this levy, yeah, we had a separate resolution that was a shared vision, but, you know, the language that's used, both in the ballot language that's proposed here, as well as the resolution, is largely statutory and required. You cannot change much of that language. So this is the language that's been vetted, that's part of the statute and also been vetted by our outside counsel.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion?
President Jones, can I just finish one last thought on that? I want to just share what's behind my question, just so everybody has access to it. And I want to also acknowledge that this is my first time through one of these. I can see an argument, if we assume first that, like, this language is going to get locked tonight. And if we assume second that there's no mention of preschool in it. The only risk that I see in that is, like, it could be really helpful to have, in terms of getting it passed on the ballot, to remind voters, but that there's something about good for preschool, that this levy would do. But also, maybe we don't need it. And, you know, if we have to make a decision on this tonight, I'm not going to be the person to hold it up. I think we should go forward. But it felt like an important question to ask. And I wanted to just share what was behind the question I was asking.
Right. If I could just add that before we close the conversation, Mr. Lindy, I do think, as Mr. Hoynes referenced, that the language that was referenced in our, in the previous resolution that I just talked about, the shared vision with this partnership, that's where that language appeared. And I think moving forward, I think we will see a lot more of the language around this as a joint effort come out as part of the levy planning piece as well. But the way I understand it, and people can correct me if I'm wrong, this is pretty much standard legal language. So I don't know if that helps or hurts, but yeah. So I believe, and I haven't talked to Shara, but I believe what she was referencing was actually one of the two resolutions that came forward in the previous levy, and that was around the shared vision.
Okay. Well, the last thing I want to do is create a problem where we don't have one. So please, thank you. This feels great, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
I think Ms. Bolton has a question.
Okay. I can't, I'm having a hard time seeing the hand. So just yell out if I miss you, Ms. Bolton.
Okay. I think to Mr. Lindy's point and to your point, Madam President, I think it makes sense that in a June date, that the kind of recommitment to that shared vision passes as a resolution, and perhaps that can be something that the joint body can pass as a way to kick off the levy plan. So I think it makes sense to make that a commitment through a resolution, but not necessarily through the ballot language.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call a roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. I have another resolution, a resolution appointing two new audit committee members. They are Chiquita Britton and also Elizabeth Gutridge. Chiquita Britton is a human resources tech at Macy's. And Elizabeth Gutridge is a CPA and assurance staff member at Plank and Moran. They've gone through the application and the interview process by the audit committee, and I recommend on their behalf, passage, and would be happy to have us welcome these people to the audit committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Another from the audit committee, a resolution. And again, this represents a bit of a departure, but we think a needed departure regarding practice. And that's the resolution appointing a new audit committee chair. His name is Thomas Tim Heldman, who has served on the audit, the community audit committee for several years. He was voted upon as required by the charter of the audit committee to be chair of the committee. And we're thrilled that he is willing to serve. I so move that he become the chair of the audit committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye. And personal privilege, he is also a former student of mine, so I'm very proud.
And Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Point of privilege, I was going to say yes, but since I know it's Ms. Bolton's former student, I'm going to say twice.
Thank you.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Okey-dokey. Superintendent Mitchell?
So the only report that I have for tonight is the written report to provide for you this evening. Thank you.
Great. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
I move.
Second.
Second, Ms. Bates? Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Ms. Bolton?
I have a question about the stipend for Schedule E. From a standpoint of which ones actually, they're all in there, and which ones have indeed been able to be acted upon or actually occurred versus because of the shutdown have not occurred? And how are we handling that?
Yeah. So we actually discussed that today in our performance leadership team meeting. And obviously, we'll make payments to those coaches and club advisors who actually implemented the winter activities, whether we're talking about clubs or sports. Before the shutdown took place, many of the coaches and club sponsors did planning for the spring event. And so we will pay them for that portion of the time that they plan. And so we'll be collecting that information to make sure that it's accurate payment, not for the entire time, but for their planning time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Let's see. Did we second that? Who seconded this? Yes, been checked. Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Aye.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
I am recusing on item G and yes on everything else. Okay. Thank you. Report is approved. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
I move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Jen, I just have a question about the item number eight, Roman number eight on page 13, the donations. Is that for future events that students are planning to go on? Or is this from the past?
More than likely, they were planned field trips that they haven't happened yet. But we can look into the timing of when the donation actually came in.
And so what happens to those funds if it was for the future? That they're probably not going to occur?
Well, we'll have to ask the donee if they want the money back or if they want to just repurpose it. So we'll have to follow up on that. So, we'll have to follow up on that.
So, it's a possibility the schools could probably use it for the next year if they leave it.
It really depends on the donor, because if they donate for a specific cause, it's the only thing they could spend that money on. So, we'd have to get permission from the donor.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I have a, I'm glad to see that very few, if any, of these refer to anything beyond June of 20. That makes sense. I am interested in knowing about Roman numeral three, the purchase of furniture for the Quest launch ed, something, yeah. The, I guess it's for part of the Maersen rooms. I don't know. I know we need it, but I don't know if that's something we can defer or delay after we have a better understanding.
Yeah, so this is to actually purchase furniture, update the furniture for that location. So, the furniture that is there, the year, the chairs that are there and the tables are literally 27 years old, and so they need to be updated. I do believe this is a cost that we should move forward with. We are looking at other cost savings, but to provide a professional setting for our teachers, principals, hair professionals, everyone, we believe we need to update that furniture.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would agree. The other one is Roman numeral four, which is the continuation of the Cohere contract regarding community engagement. Are they, does that pertain to now surveying or data collection? Because it's about reframing the community learning center framework, which I think is important to do, but I, now that community engagement's a little bit hard to do.
Yes. So, I'm going to ask, hold on, I'm thinking for just a moment. My mind just went somewhere else, because I know that they did some work with us just recently as it relates to our kids being on this stay-at-home order. But I believe that was pro bono. So, let me look at this. We asked them to do some work with us related to remember Pleasant Ridge. And so, this might be part of that contract, but I'm going to be honest, I'd have to go and look specifically. I just can't remember if they were doing a number of things with us.
Okay, thank you. The other piece I have is the, on the next to last page, it's the grant awards. It's the Ohio Department of Ed. It's the 8.5 million. Is that what, that 8.5 or 9 million we've been discussing virtually all year long regarding social and emotional learning?
I believe that is the case. Is that right, Treasure Wagner?
Yes. It's, yes, well, they, the Ohio Department of Education decided to establish a whole separate fund for it. So, it's now Fund 467. And so, that's the acknowledgement that that's being put in there.
Great, that's why we had to vote on it before, right? Because of the line item or some, okay. It's the same amount of money. Thank you.
Yes, you needed to appropriate, yes. So, I have a question about that last, the Cohere. Are we pulling that contract from this treasurer's report? Are we going forward with it, you know, just follow up later?
Superintendent, I didn't request that. I just needed clarity as to how community engagement was going to occur under these circumstances.
Sure.
So, I would prefer that we go forward with it. Of course, we won't pay it out. We only pay out the money that we are spending. But they actually did do some engagement for us around COVID-19 to get good information remotely. And so, we'll carefully monitor how the dollars are being spent.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I need a motion to approve the, I already did that. Is there a second? We've been discussing. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer? Can't hear you.
Me? Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. I just wanted to give the board a brief reminder that this public meeting is scheduled to end at 7:00. So, we still have a couple more things. I just want us to be cognizant that what will happen is that it'll automatically release the attendees. So, if we want to get everything in, just be mindful of that as we do the last two agenda items. Okay, so moving forward, inquiries and updates. Ms. Bolton, on the Ohio teacher evaluation system?
Yes. And this is an additional briefing. You'll recall that the last couple of meetings, board meetings, I've addressed the changes that were perhaps going to be happening in the OTES 2.0. And indeed, those changes have occurred and it's been voted on unanimously. And I also cited at that time in our previous meeting that there was testimony provided by CFT leader Kendra Phelps. And because we didn't have any public opportunity this time, I asked if she would like to make comment. She has submitted a letter, and I don't know if our board staff or if Sarah has it ready to mount. I'm not sure. But as we get ready, oh, good, thank you. This is a letter from Kendra Phelps with the CFT. And it is the CFT's interest in endorsing what has now been passed by the state board and has also been written into law that we've been quoting a number of times already today by the state legislature. And if I can take a moment for you to look at that, and I will read some of it. Dear President Jones and board members, our teachers and principals bravely navigated through the OTES 2.0 pilot this year. It was very difficult because the guidelines were being developed as they were being implemented, and they received no real training on some of these changes. Our OTES 2.0 pilot team, which includes teachers, principals, and human resources representatives, are committed to doing a better job of providing support next year. We all agree that the biggest and most important shift is changing the culture of evaluation, being a checklist for compliance to a collaborative process that supports teachers' professional growth, which influences student academic growth and overall well-being of our school communities. We are aware that the state superintendent has issued an extension of July 1, 2020 date, which was supposed to then be when all people boards would have a board policy about this, and to the adoption date from July 1 to September 1 of 20. Given the fact that our district participated in the OTES pilot, it is important that we move forward with implementation of OTES 2.0. Delaying updating our board policy to align with the model that has been developed by the state will only stagger our progress and cause unnecessary confusion. We are asking that the representatives from the OTES pilot team have an opportunity to work with the board policy committee to inform the policy revisions now. CFT believes that 1920 annual evaluations that were not completed prior to the mandated school closure should be marked incomplete in Ohio Education Board this year. If an evaluation was completed, then it should be documented. One of the major goals of anything we do should be to avoid putting added stress on educators at this time. The point that I would like to make with this letter is that after the state board passed the new OTES, which has been, people have been working on that since 2016, they made some changes this summer, in the last two weeks, so that we could address this problem regarding the closure of schools. In that summary that has been posted, districts have been given great flexibility about the current teacher evaluations for this previous, this particular school year. And districts have been able to make certain decisions with consultation with the bargaining unit members and organizations as to how to count completed or incomplete evaluations. School boards have also been given the extra time to put it into policy. But what we have here is the CFT basically saying that they would like to move ahead since we were a pilot district. There were 72 pilot districts in the state that already put this through to practice it and work on it. So, I think we, I honor that the CFT has come forward on this. And I think that I would later on be addressing the policy committee with an assignment if it would please the board for them to perhaps engage in looking at how the policy could be, the current policy could be a different policy, more reflective of the new laws and the new OTES 2.
Okay. You're providing this information to us for a potential conversation, further conversation?
Yes.
Or just an update on where things are?
I think it's an update. I've spoken briefly to the superintendent. And Kendra has made this letter public and would have brought it to us today if it's been a regular meeting. I, there's two things. I think the administration has to figure out how they want to proceed based upon, I'm pleased with the flexibility districts have been granted. And the administration can maybe share their views at a later time with the board. But from this standpoint, it does represent a new way of approaching the evaluation process. There does seem to be some agreement on some of the major things that are allowable. And then, more particularly, besides a full board discussion, it probably has to be an assignment to the policy committee. And I think the administration can help advise us as to whether or not we can make that July 1 date or the September date. I think CFT is interested in appropriately training for this new effort on OTES 2. So, it's an ordinary administrative discussion, but I was pleased that CFT was interested in thinking about this.
Thank you. And so, what we can do, make board members, just to remind board members to, if you haven't already, review it thoroughly, it sounds like it's going to come up again. And then, potentially, in assignments, we may have one or two assignments related to that. And I am pushing forward. Ms. Bowers, you have a question?
Yeah, just, how do we get a copy of it?
It should be in your board doc. It was in your board document. Yeah. Okay. I'm pushing this forward, Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, I think the letter only came today. And I appreciate the administration forwarding it. And I do think it's a great full board discussion and a great opportunity for the policy committee to review and think about it. So, I'm thrilled that we might be in this position. But of course, we have to hear from the administration at a later date about how to proceed.
Yes, it was a recent submission on your board docs, Ms. Bowers. So, that's probably why you didn't see it. And then, we'll look, and it sounds like Ms. Bolton is going to make an assignment, and then it'll be on our next, it'll be on an upcoming board meeting. Okay. So, pushing forward fairly quickly so that we can make sure, are there any other inquiries and updates before we move on? Okay. So, assignments? Assignments? Ms. Bolton?
I would like to assign to the administration a review of what is the status of the current, the OTES 2, and to advise us regarding the flexibility regarding incomplete evaluations for administrators, teachers, and school counselors, and completed ones, because it is left to the district in consultation with the bargaining unit members and representatives as to how to proceed on each of those particular evaluations for particular individuals. Some are done, some are done and some are not. So, if the administration could report back on what they think is the best way to proceed. And then, I would like to make a second recommendation that the policy committee, based upon where the administration falls on this, start to review and develop a new policy that is representative of OTES 2. Hopefully, I think, by the July 1 date, so that, but that's my opinion. But I leave it to the policy committee to figure it out.
Okay. Thank you. Any other assignments? Additional assignments? Mr. Messer, I believe you had an earlier one related to, for administration to do some sort of survey?
Yeah, I wouldn't actually, yeah, I wouldn't call that an assignment at all. I mean, I think it was just a thought, something that they could take into consideration, but in no way an assignment.
Got you. Thank you. Any other assignments, Dan? Any other? Okay. Well, hearing none, I need a motion to recess into executive session to consider purchase of property for public purpose property and preparation for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees. And I need a motion.
Done.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. So, having no other business before, I declare the meeting, the regular meeting adjourned.